Do you want to? Okay. I'm gonna cross it off. Did you want any background? And put together this piece?
I'm gonna call to order the June 5th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, the Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're gonna begin tonight, as we do each week, with a pledge of allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council on staff in the pledge, which tonight's gonna be led by Mickey Fawcett.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to a devoted or which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with stationary engineers local 39 and with the Firefighters Association local 522, and no action was taken. That brings us to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our printed agenda, the council is prohibited by state law from having a discussion or taking action on issues that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We ask anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item is currently being considered. The clerk accepts the yellow cards all the way after the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item other than 1A, which doesn't have a staff report. Once the public testimony is begun or the council comments and questions, we don't take any additional cards, so please be sure to get your cards in before the conclusion of the staff report. We also recognize that for some folks speaking in public and on television can be uncomfortable and promote anxiety, so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or applause or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have a couple of requests to begin under item 1A, and the first is by Rose-- oh, no, that's item 14, sorry. We don't have any requests under item 1A, so we're gonna proceed to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there reports of the communications? Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met on May 16th, and we held a workshop on our biennial administrative and operations budget and capital improvement budget for fiscal years 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021. The Yolo County Housing Board met on May 22nd, and we authorized the write-off of uncollected debt and approved an application for family self-sufficiency funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The Yolo County-- the Yolo Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, met here in our West Sacramento council chambers on May 23rd, and we approved the reorganization of the lower Elkhorn Reclamation Districts, and we adopted the municipal service review for the Sacramento-Yolo Port District, and we also adopted the LAFCO budget for fiscal year 2019-20. The River City Regional Stadium Financing Authority met on May 30th. We approved the budget for municipal administrative expenses for fiscal year 2019-2020 and approved successor custodian under the stadium lockbox agreements. It's obviously budget time of year. And earlier tonight, the Sacramento-Yolo Port District Commission met. We approved an amendment to the license agreement with AT&amp;T, and we approved the port budget for fiscal year 2019-20. And since the last council meeting, I participated in the Women of West Sacramento luncheon, where former West Sacramento elected officials were recognized, and I had the honor of recognizing former councilwoman Carolyn Castillo Pearson at that event. I also attended the River Crossing Public Art Announcement, where councilmember Crystal Desma represented us very well, and I attended and spoke at the Public Works Week barbecue along with councilmember Guerrero. And I also, with most of my colleagues, attended the West Sacramento Community Picnic this past Sunday. A woman in our community, Peggy Bell, was a leader and managed an amazing job organizing it, and one of our commissioners as well, and we had an awesome DJ there. Matthew Hargov DJed that event as well. And then just last night, I had the honor of attending the Yolo High School, Washington Adult School, and transition to adult living graduation, which was held at the Crest Cedar.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Regional Water Authority held a special meeting of the Board of Directors on May 22nd to review the appointment of an executive director and discuss the labor negotiation issues going on. In addition, the Yolo Habitat Conservancy met on May 20th. Extended contracts were approved. Key contracts include the Alfred Environment for $125,000. The Alfred Environmental will continue to assist with the implementation of the Yolo HCP and CCP. In addition, Consero Solutions for $175,000, they will continue the executive director role of the 2019-20 fiscal year. Discussions continue on the hiring of an executive director or a contract which may affect the level of need for deputy director and executive director services. In addition, we adopted a budget resolution for the 2019-20 year, which includes a new financial structure with six funds to help keep track of expenditures and revenue sources. It really has helped with transparency of what is spent on each fund. And one last item, the Yolo Habitat Conservancy Advisory Committee is now accepting recommendations for applications for new members in 2019. I've had a chat with their city manager about looking for an advisory committee member to participate. They previously had one, and they suspended it for a period of time, and now it's being re-upped again. I also attended the City Hall Mental Health Awareness Art Show presented by many of our talented artists in Yolo County and along with councilmember Ledesma. And Women Build continued their next project on May 18 to construct new benches in Sam Combs Park. Quite a few women from our community, including councilmember Sandin, was there, shoveling sand, deconstructing old benches, and replacing them with new benches. It looks beautiful now. And I want to thank our West Sac PD and Evictus Youth Foundation for the successful football clinic on May 18th, where many youth participated and gained football skills, which helps promote self-esteem and builds a more connected community. I also attended the Comprehensive Opiate Recovery Experience Medical Clinic to help individuals recover from addiction. I'd like a presentation done at some point in the future by them. Dr. Stenson does freely-- free monthly educational forums on opiate of the brain, and it's located on 3990 Industrial Boulevard. These monthly meetings are on the third Wednesday of the month. And I also wanna thank our West Sac Fire Department for their open house on May 25th, which I attended in Station 44, encouraging families to learn more about fire safety and promote positive connection with the community. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. A few things to go through tonight, a couple of them mentioned already. First, back on the-- I can't remember my memory. The 20th, there's a meeting of the County Wides Successor Agency Oversight Board. There was a special meeting in Woodland that day for the special purpose of approving the City of Davis's, or at least their successor agencies', request and action to refi some of their bond that they had allocated in their agency already. So it was a pretty simple action, but that was necessary for them to recoup some savings with their city. So we were able to get that done. And as councilmember Guerrero brought up, I took part in the press conference to announce on May 23rd, the River Crossings Art Project, which was a really huge project. If the public hasn't looked at the site for that yet, for River Crossings, the website, you are open to nominate anybody to name. The artwork is a joint project between Sacramento and West Sacramento with a grant from the National Endowment for the Art to name-- naming project for the docks we're building on our side on Rayleigh's Landing, as well as the Old Sacramento side, to be able to name those docks. It's a really exciting program that with the art, isn't just the art, which I'll get to in a second, it's actually the process to engaging the community, to bring the riverfront as a place that's alive and a place for conversation about who our two cities are. Myself and councilmember Eric Guerra from Sacramento kicked it off, and what we're asking the public is to engage actively in that project. You can nominate anybody to have the dock named after them. You would just simply go to the website. You can nominate a person, give a 250-word, that constitutes an essay. I'll count on our educational professor over here to nominate what that constitutes an essay, but a 250-word paragraph on whoever your favorite person is that you think should be-- have a dock named after them. And there will be a panel of folks that will be judging that after-- they're taking nominations through July 10th. I think I have that right, Katie? It's July 10th? And then the panel and some outside folks that are participating in panel will select the winners, and the winners then will have their names emblazoned in a light and sign on those both sides of the docks. They will be in maritime language, and if you actually go to the website, you can actually type in the name and see what the maritime flag looks like. So you could see, again, kinda started to get a flavor of it. It's really exciting, it's really cool, it's a good way to bring a conversation and bring people out and show them, appreciate them for what they've done. It could be your kid, it could be your teacher, it could be their karate teacher, it could be whoever you feel has been, upholds the West Sac values. So it's a really exciting project. I urge all of you, and anybody that happens to be watching, to take a look at it and participate. So again, I'm sure it's on the city's website, and feel free to look at it for more. I do wanna spend some time talking about last week, where there was a meeting on the 29th on the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, and it was a pretty robust meeting. Just to kinda recap, this is the commission of community leaders from across the region in Sacramento, in West Sacramento, including the two electeds, myself and councilmember Steve Hanson from Sacramento, or the electeds on the board. And the purpose of it is to really, as commissioned by Mayor Cabaldin and Mayor Steinberg, was to really give the public a chance and the commission a chance to really look at the effects of climate change. We all know the effects of that, but also engage the public and engage folks from a broad spectrum about the ways we can address climate change in addition to things we're already doing or how to amplify things we may be doing. It's been an interesting and educational process. Wednesday's agenda, there's a lot of civic engagement around it. We heard from-- the local government commission is leading this, and they've done a lot of outreach. We've heard from Sacramento City on a lot of engagement they've done. Julia Burrows, who now works for the City of Sacramento, has done a college summit, youth summit, which I think Mayor Cabaldin and you were at and spoke at. But we are looking to do another youth summit here in West Sacramento in the fall, was trying to nail down a date with Principal Moicich and the Washington Unified, that will be at the high school. And we also got a briefing from Valley Vision around their regional opinion survey, which showed a wide spectrum of support for city leaders and the private sector to do a lot more to engage on climate change. The most important part of that meeting were some recommendations. I should point that, there was a-- I wanna highlight Scott Blunk, who's a West Sac resident, but he's also the strategic business planner for SMUD, and Scott gave a really good presentation on the cost-effectiveness of going electrified, how it can cost in new home construction, and how it can save rate payers on utility, your utility bills, and as a way to sort of prelude the recommendations that came from the first set of recommendations. So there's three areas the commission is looking at. It's the built environment, mobility, and the third one, all of a sudden escapes me, around health and sustainability. So this one was around the built environment, which means how we build houses, how we build buildings, how we plan. And a tack has been meeting over the past few months. David Tilly, thank you for participating in this with that team. But they came back with some recommendations, and which the commission adopted as the first part of climate change, and again, these are recommendations that we will take and start to work with. We'll listen to the other two tacks as they come back and start to give us recommendations. So again, this is part of an ongoing process over the next 12 months, I think the timeframe is. Excuse me. And so there's been a lot of, I'm gonna make sure people are aware, our city is not adopting those. This is the adoption of the Climate Commission as recommendations that they will later propose to both Sacramento City and West Sacramento, as well as recommendations to the universities and the private sector partners as ways we can all work together to improve climate change. So all these will anticipate having to come back to us in some form as a presentation. There is one takeaway that I have, that the City of West Sac has, and I'll be meeting with Mike Teal, who's the family of the Teal family, and the owners of Rayleigh's, and CEO, who's asked to work with me and work with the city staff. As a takeaway, to work on better education and to engage the business community, to engage our public, let's do that together, Rayleigh's and West Sacramento, as a takeaway. So we'll be working on that going forward. I should note, there will be a roundtable coming up for business owners across the region, and will include Rayleigh's and a few others from West Sacramento. So again, it's a pretty broad conversation around climate change, and the great part about it is a lot of different people from the private sector, from the public sector, folks from Kaiser Healthcare Organizations, and Sac State are there as well. So it's been a really engaging process, and that's the update I have for today. I did also wanna make note, I did attend Yolo County's Mental Health Awareness Month and Festival, and I just wanna thank Karen, we know we honored her at the last meeting, and everybody else in the committee who I think really made a big deal for the first time around Mental Health Awareness Month. I got a lot of feedback around what the city did. I wanna thank the city staff for bringing the resolution to us and for the city council for recognizing that, as Karen had told us, I think both Martha would attest, is Sacramento is one of the only ones that did some sort of resolution for the month, and that meant a lot. So again, hopefully next year, we can do some better things and plan some things, but thank you. That's all I have for today.
All right. Pro Temor Roscoe.
All right. Let's talk about sanitation. So on May 22nd, 2019, I attended with the Board of Directors the Sacramento Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant. That's where we held our meeting, so that all the Board of Directors got a chance to see the ECO water project and see what we're working on and see what's yet to be built and what we're decommissioning there. We, at the meeting, adopted amendments to the Sacramento Regional Sanitation Consolidated Ordinance for sewer rates. And so at the last meeting, I mentioned that it was originally the plan back in 2017 to increase sewer rates by a dollar for three years, and then in the last two years, $0.50 per year. However, things are going pretty well, so we don't any longer have to go with the rate increases. So our fees are going to be flatlined, which is really good news. Every time you flush, think of Regional SAN. And also, we approved the five-- excuse me, the budget for both Regional SAN and Sewer District, and that was passed unanimously. In addition, this past Sunday, Representative West Sacramento, along with councilmember Bab Sandin, at the Kaiser Women's Fitness Festival, we covered both the 5K and the 10K between us, so that was fantastic. I have the four elected officials that were on the board there for the fitness festival, two of them are from West Sacramento, so that's-- [music] Yeah, excuse me. And I had an opportunity to honor of West Sacramento's first mayor, Cindy Tuttle, who is there on the wall and who was our most recently Parks Director, and it was a fantastic honor and privilege to say a few words about her. There was a lot of folks in the room that day. It was really wonderful to see such a diverse group of women leaders, both past and present, who were there to be honored and also to honor others. This past Sunday, as mentioned, was the West Sacramento Community Picnic hosted by one of our commissioners, Peggy Bell. I've had the great fortune of living as a neighbor to Ms. Bell and have attended several of her events, whether it be a Taco Tuesday or some event, just a community gathering at the Sail Inn or at Bike Dog. This particular event was really special because we're in the past, in the last two years, we've had a neighborhood picnic, which was well-attended for a neighborhood event. This is a citywide event, and there were representatives from our West Sac police, from our cadets, from Cub Scouts, emerging organizations that just wanted to recruit new members, but also people from the community who were just selling goods or crafts. And if you didn't go, there were these wonderful West Sac cookies that I think were just pretty phenomenal, pretty creative. And so I look forward to future years, and I just really wanted to commend Ms. Bell, because there are a few people in this community who really do step up and make a difference, and she didn't have to do that. And so I really wanted to highlight those efforts because they make a tremendous impact on the lives of our children, our families, and our neighbors. So kudos to her for that. I spoke at the Kinders to College event on May 24th on behalf of the city and remarked about our West Sac home run and gave both the kinders from Bridgeway Island, as well as educators alongside our Washington Unified School District, school leaders, information about, you know, our program here, which is, again, for many of us who aren't familiar with the West Sac home run, I'm sure everybody is, but it's pretty unique in the nation and in greater audiences. But letting those kinders know that they have a college savings account, assuming they meet the high-quality preschool requirement, but also high-quality internships and scholarships and free tuition down the line. So this is very exciting to spread that and educate our community. We also honored, for a moment, a person from Bridgeway Island who will be retiring and leaving our community as a principal, but was the person who helped open Bridgeway Island. So it's pretty cool, but it'll be a tremendous loss, but I understand we have a fantastic person coming in to keep that legacy alive. And last but not least, I also attended the West Sac Little League closing ceremonies this past weekend. Let me tell you, if you haven't done it before, you gotta be there next year. As a council member, but also as a parent, most importantly, which is my most favorite hat, we're talking about hundreds from our community who paraded around. I mean, you might see rapper Stones Street, we're trying to pick up every last one, so if you see one, pick it up. But we see Dave Janz, who is one of our commissioners, as well as a West Sac Little League board member. A fantastic event, big community builder, and again, everybody's really excited about all the new improvements to come and looking forward to an even better season next year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Good run through sewers and Little League and--
When you flush, think of us.
Everyone. So I was at several of these events, but I did, Mr. Ledesma reminded me that tonight, we don't, there are no high school students here or teachers tonight, because tonight's the River City High School graduation, and we did have one, Austin Roberts, who's a former River City High School senior, who went on to Sac State and played baseball. Sac State's just been selected in the draft, Major League Baseball draft, by the Pittsburgh Pirates as well, so it's a good week for our high school students and alumni. Just three things I wanted to highlight. The first, the streetcar policy, the working group that we've set up between Congresswoman Matsui and Mayor Steinberg and the CEO of SMUD, Arlen Orchard and I have been, we've been meeting off and on since December. We met again last week, just scoped some alternatives that the staffs have been preparing around the next steps on our mobility and transportation strategy, and are looking towards scheduling a time for both city councils. We're at that stage now where there are some key policy choices that need to be made, following up on the work that was done at the council's strategic planning workshop as well. So look for that soon. There's some great options and alternatives and opportunities that are ahead for us in our city as well. Last week, or the week before, I was representing the, I traveled to Bogota, Colombia as the lead of the mayoral delegation from the United States to the International LGBT Elected Officials Summit, and presented on what cities, how cities have been, are changing their own policies and their practices and some of their cultural work in their communities to promote equality and inclusion. And then I just landed from South Bend, Indiana, where presented at a session at the University of Notre Dame hosted by Google and a couple of other national foundations around what cities are doing around the radical changes that are happening in work as a result of technology and trade and the rising middle class and workforce in other countries and the gig economy. Not since the Industrial Revolution has there been this much disruption to employment, to individual jobs, to skills, to the nature of benefits, and to what can cities do. There's really little happening at the national level on this topic, and we were asked to be there, in part because I chaired the Educational Workforce Committee for the US Conference of Mayors, but mostly because the West Sacramento home run that Mayor Pro Temor Roscoe just referenced is seen as the top national model for dealing with resilience and creativity and adaptability, the sorts of things that, no matter which scenario of the future you look at, those are the kinds of dispositions and skills that are the most critical. And the work in particular that we've been doing on digital badging with LRNG and with some of our other partners, and all of the challenges that we've had and, you know, the difficulties of trying to make that work work, but to give value and validate and to make, create a currency essentially for learning that occurs outside of the classroom, in community volunteer work, in other forms, us and 12 other cities that have been doing that work nationally, that is now going to the next level. So South Bend, yesterday, just announced a new lifelong learning initiative in their city to connect a whole range of learning opportunities, but it's built on the platform that we created through the LRNG digital badges, and LRNG is actually a partner in that process as well. So South Bend, Indiana, Cincinnati, Ohio, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and West Sacramento, California, were the sort of the four exemplars of cities that are getting ahead of this is probably a little strong, because we're already in the midst of a highly automated economy and gig economy, and the impact on our local workers is very significant, not just in terms of your job getting wiped away in a factory by a robot, although we have seen that, now that we have so many industrial employers in West Sacramento that, you know, 10 years ago would have been employing 200, 300 people at their operation, are now employing 5, 18, who are managing the robots. So we have seen a lot of the traditional job losses relative to automation, but also real estate transaction workers, paralegals, truck drivers, I mean, a wide range of job categories that are very well represented here in our city are at significant risk of either being wiped away or more likely changing dramatically, and it's gonna be incumbent on places to create the kinds of systems of support and learning and skills and certifications that will allow for folks to either adapt to the changes in their own job or to new jobs as they are emerging in this new set, and then also at the same time trying to deal with some of the issues around the lack of benefits and wage security and other wealth indicators that the gig economy has been pushing into, even though it's increased-- been, has been pushing into, even though it's increased income for a lot of folks, that's come at a cost of incomes and wealth security. So, this, it's gonna be, it is cities today in the country that are, that are the ones leading that work, and among cities, I think there's, West Sacramento is certainly seen as a key leader in that space, although we've not solved it by any means. The work that we've been doing in the badging space and in collaboration with the school district and the community colleges on the home run are a key component of that, so it's a good session. All right, so the Item 1C's appointments of boards and commissioners, we don't have any tonight, so that's gonna bring us then to Item 2, which is Presentation by the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District on Mosquito Control Matters. So, we have with us the Assistant General Manager of the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District, Dr. Severe Alkashver?
Yep.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, thank you for having me. Oh, I switched slides? Are you gonna switch slides for me? All right, this'll be fun. All right, so, thank you very much for having me tonight. I wanted to make some brief comments on our operations. So, as our name says, we cover both Sacramento and Yolo Counties, and covering both of these counties provides unique challenges as Yolo County is primarily agricultural-based with communities making up islands amongst the agriculture, and then Sacramento County being predominantly our urban base. So, some of the mosquito control issues in these areas are very different, which require unique approaches for controlling them. Next slide, please. So, here we have some examples of some of the habitats we have in our agricultural areas. As you can see, we have rice fields and wetlands primarily in Yolo County that we're going after. So, the challenge here is getting to all of them. There's a lot of acreage to cover, so we have to make sure that we inspect and treat this acreage in a reasonable amount of time before those mosquitoes develop into adults and threaten public health. So, in the summer years, rice is the main concern. Rice fields are large bodies of standing water, and large bodies of standing water can produce many, many mosquitoes, if less untreated. And then, the wetlands really become an issue when they start to flood up, typically around the fall flooding period that the typical duck clubs will do. So, that'll be more in the September to October timeframe when West Nile virus is still circulating in our community, and those flooding events can contribute to the propagation of the virus. And in our urban communities, we have the backyard sources which are, can be a concern to us. The difference here being, as opposed to having lots of acreage, which is very obvious, we have very little breeding sources that are not obvious. We don't have a lot of folks that can go door-to-door and go into people's backyards and look for, you know, the swimming pools and the tires and the plan ditches and the buckets. So, we have a pretty robust public outreach campaign urging residents to make those walkarounds to their homes about once a month and dumping any standing water. That really helps us out a lot as we can't be in everyone's backyard at any given time. So, as far as how we control mosquitoes, we practice a scientific approach labeled integrated mosquito management. It starts with public information, so educating the public on what they can do to control mosquitoes in their neighborhoods. So, we have community events that we attend on a regular basis, so you'll see us at events at parks or at, we do the Sacramento River Cats every year, we have a Fight the Bite Night, so you'll see us there. And then, we have meetings with neighborhood associations and city council presentations such as these where we try to inform the public as much as possible. And then, we have our surveillance. We do surveillance for a few things, so for West Nile virus, it's a bird disease, so we have a bird surveillance program where folks can call in dead birds, we'll pick them up and then test them for the disease. They serve as our early warning system because the disease will come through birds first, and then from birds move to mosquitoes, and then from mosquitoes it'll move to humans. So, birds are an early warning system for that. So, we have a pretty robust dead bird campaign that we do every year. We also have a very robust mosquito surveillance program, looking at both adult mosquitoes collected in traps and surveillance of larval mosquitoes or juvenile mosquitoes in the water. And then, we also test those mosquitoes for the presence of West Nile virus or not, and those give us indicators for our next control measures we should highlight. The first being biological control, which is mainly the use of mosquito fish that can be planted in any standing, body of standing water that doesn't drain into natural bodies of water. So, these mosquito fish are very efficient at eating mosquito juveniles and will do so quite readily, and it's their preferred food source as well. We have ecological management, also known as physical control, so that's physically going out and looking for standing water and trying to remove it. So, if there's no more standing water, mosquitoes can breed, so we have a department that handles that, using small equipment as well as large equipment such as BACOs. And then, we have our chemical control, so if mosquito fish doesn't work, if we can't get rid of the standing water, then we'll use larva sites to kill mosquitoes in the water or adult sites to kill mosquitoes as they're flying around. Next slide. So, as far as diseases are concerned, here in West Sacramento and our district as a whole, we're concerned with West Nile virus. It's the most prolific virus in America vectored by mosquitoes. It can lead from anywhere from cold or flu-like symptoms all the way to invasion of the nervous system, causing things like paralysis, blindness, and sometimes death. Other diseases that are on the lookout for are malaria. Even though malaria's been eradicated from the United States, we still have people who travel overseas and bring back the disease, and unfortunately, here in West Sacramento and our district as a whole, we have the mosquito that can vector malaria. So, we have a good working relationship with the public health officers in both counties, and they'll inform us of any travel-related occurrences of the disease, and then we'll put traps around those areas to make sure that that person doesn't come into contact with the mosquito that can carry the disease. And then, we have diseases such as dengue, chikungunya, and Zika, which can be vectored by mosquitoes. Fortunately, we don't have the mosquito that carries them here as of yet, knock on wood. Hopefully, we won't get it. The mosquito is in California and it's making its way northwards into our ears. And then, dog heartworm is a disease of concern for those of you who have pets. We do have the mosquito that can carry it, and these mosquitoes are most abundant right after the rains as they breed in tree holes. Thank you. As far as West Nile virus activity is California as a whole, there's been a steady downturn of human cases. Like to contribute to that through the efforts of vector control districts across the state. Although, the number of human cases have decreased from year to year, these numbers tend to be underreported because only really the neuroinvasive forms of West Nile virus are the most reported. The flu and cold-like symptoms don't go reported because, I don't know about you guys, but when I get a cold, I don't go to the doctor, and so that's why they're underreported. So, the estimate is for every one case that is reported, there's about anywhere from 30 to 70 cases that go unreported. If we look at mosquitoes, last year, we had a very bad West Nile virus year in the mosquito population and the bird population. Those numbers aren't reported here, but luckily, that hasn't affected the human population. As far as West Sacramento goes, in, I have a map here outlining the city. The red dots highlight the positive mosquito samples, so we only had one positive mosquito sample in all of West Sacramento last year, so that was really good news for everyone, especially the residents, and 14 positive dead birds. If you look outside of West Sacramento across the river, you can see that we had quite a bit more activity, and especially from the pocket area of Sacramento, south through Al Grove, it was a very rampant West Nile virus year. So, as far as 2019, what to expect? Well, it's super hot outside as today, as all of you can tell, and we just had a lot of rain. So, a lot of rain plus high heat means a lot of mosquito breeding sources, and those mosquitoes, because of the heat, will breed even quicker. Their life cycles are that much shortened, so we've been putting a lot of hours in the field to make sure that those sources are under control. And as far as what the virus will bring, couldn't tell you that. If I could, I'd probably go into consulting and make a lot of money worldwide, but hopefully, we don't have a bad West Nile virus year. Studies have shown that when you have more water sources, you tend to have lower virus activity because the birds can spread out more throughout the area as opposed to drought years where you have very limited water. The birds tend to congregate all around that water, and those are, that's the only water available for mosquitoes to breed in, so the birds are in close proximity to the mosquitoes. So, hopefully, that hypothesis is proven true this year, and we have a very low West Nile virus year. And then, as far as what we can do to help control mosquitoes, drain your standing water, that's the biggest thing. If you see it around your house, get rid of it. At dusk and dawn are times to avoid being outdoors, that's when the mosquitoes that spread West Nile virus are most active. If you're outdoors during those times, dress in long sleeves to protect yourself, use a repellent for any exposed skin. We buy by the pallet, so if you have events going on this summer, please let us know, and we'll deliver it to you at no charge. Make sure your doors and your window screens are in good working order. And last but not least, call the district for help if you're experiencing mosquito control issues. That's our job, that's what we do, it's a free service, kind of, it's paid by your property taxes, so you're already paying for it, so please use us. And with that, I am done. Hopefully, that was short enough.
All right. Did you have a question?
No, I just commented.
Oh, okay. Mayor Potemor Roscoe.
Oh. First off, thank you for clarifying the bird-to-mosquito relationship. I actually had a conversation with my son about whether or not mosquitoes bite animals as well as humans because he got beaten up. But I wanted to commend vector control. You guys give out those Ben's packets, correct? I think a couple of years ago, myself and Oscar Viegas were giving them out at National Night Out, and they were fantastic, and they're especially fantastic when you're on the Little League field watching a game and the mosquitoes are out getting you. So, if there's any way that we can connect the supply to, or I'm happy to help facilitate that too, because I know that I was handing them out on the ball field, and a lot of, there were a lot of happy people out there, but thank you for that effort.
Yeah, we buy by the pallet, and we buy, so it's used, there's no cure to West Nile virus, so the best, you know, way to avoid it is to not get bit.
Right.
I picked those up at their office in Woodland and brought them so that we could have them that night, just because I work there, so I just picked them up.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gero.
And yes, any way we could partner with our public information officer here to be able to spread the word, I saw on Facebook that you did post something about collecting the dead bird.
Yes.
And reposted in our community discussion page so we can get the word out, so thank you for doing the social media outreach.
Yeah, we have a public information officer, so any collaboration the city would like to do with us on sending information, we'd be more than happy to work with you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, have a good evening.
All right, then that brings us to the consent agenda, which is Items 3 through 10. You have a memo at your desk from the city manager regarding some substitute resolutions that reflect the ballot results for the CFDs. So, are there questions on consent or items to remove?
Mr. Mayor, are you going to address item number eight? Is that the resolution? No? I think that, okay, I'd like to.
Oh, okay. Yes, I am.
Okay.
All right. Any others to remove or separate question? All right, then, item number eight is the Consideration Resolution 19-63 Supporting Designation of the Bright Veterans of Foreign Wars Memorial Hall as a California State Historical Landmark. And we just had a request for public comments on this.
I'm sorry, I thought you asked me, you wanted a question to ask?
No, and so that's by James Breshear. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council for letting me speak. My name is James Breshear, I'm the Post Commander of VFW Post 8762, the West Sacramento VFW. A lot of people don't realize that West Sacramento, we're a small town, but we have two very active, very strong VFW halls, and we work very closely together on everything we do in our mission to support veterans. And we just wanted to come out here tonight to say that we support the Bright's resolution and their goal of establishing their hall as a historical site. Both of our posts have been here for over 70 years, supporting our community and being a very active part of our communities, where a lot of weddings, parties, birthdays, anniversaries, everybody comes to celebrate, and they're a great opportunity for people to come, have a cheap venue to use, and have a great time. So, it's a very active part of the community, that's what I wanted to say.
Thanks for being here tonight, Commander. I mean, it's, I mean, it's true for both, as you say, for both of the posts, that even before this was a city, maybe even, even more so before this was, we were a city, both posts have been critical centers of community gathering and celebration, and, I mean, you mentioned just a handful of the kinds of, kind of events that are happening every single week at the, at the post, but they, but they both have been a critical part of our history. This application is very strong, I can see the, you know, the handiwork of some, some very strong historians in the preparation of all of the detail that is required in order to, in order to have a shot at these kinds of state designations. It's a, it's a big deal, and it's, and so, really want to thank, I mean, we're just here tonight to support the application. We didn't do any of the, well, maybe John helped a little bit, but this is not our project. We're just wanting to say attaboy to the post and to the Historical Society and to, keeps pointing at each other for all the work that you've been doing in order to make this, this application a reality, so our fingers are crossed, but of course, the entire community is behind, is behind what you're doing, so.
Okay.
All right.
Pull number seven.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, so Mayor Potemor Roscoe wanted also, had a question, a question on number seven or pull it altogether?
Just wanted to comment on.
Okay, yeah, okay. So, item seven is Consideration and Award Contract Through Byboard Cooperative Purchasing Network for the Oregon Romtech Incorporated Plumbed Restroom Concession Stand in Shade Pavilion for Memorial Park.
Thank you. I have more of a comment than I do a question. I understand that we're going to be pulling, working on these items because of the lead time that we would need to get ahead of schedule, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, it's timely, I wanted to be one dimension Memorial Park and Little League like three times during the meeting, and so this is my third time technically, but I volunteered in the snack shack week before last, and it's, you know, it's been my.
Are there any other?
I do have one quick question.
Councilmember Gero.
On change, on a change order, is there a cap for a change order in this particular contract?
That's our standard 10% that we use on construction contracts.
That's the standard, is what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Is that it? I think that was Japal's first item, it's not supposed to get off that easily. Something, anything? Okay, there's nothing further on consent, then? Is there a motion with the modified resolutions?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Gero, seconded by Mayor Potemor Roscoe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. That brings us to our time set agenda. Item 11 is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 19-28 Calling An Election For The Purpose Of Submitting The Levy Of The Community Facilities District B Newport Estates Services To The Qualified Electors Of The Area Proposed To Be Annexed, and Resolution 19-29 Declaring The Results Of The Special Election And Conduct First Reading Of Ordinance 19-6 Levying And Apportioning A Special Tax And Annexation Number 2. Mr. Blumberg.
Mr. Mayor.
Members of the city.
I was just gonna mention, this is, these are the next three items of the items that we received, substitute resolutions.
Yes, sorry about that.
Yeah. With the next, with these three items, they all are under the Melrose Act, so you may see some similarities in the actions and proceedings, but they're each unique and different, so I'll give you a quick summary with, as we go through each agenda item. The, with item 11, you have the annexation of the Newport Villas subdivision, it's a new subdivision, and we're proposing to annex it into the Newport Estates CFDB in order to cover the maintenance that is typically assigned to the cities, that we have a source of funding for that. And so, the annexation process is much like the CFD formation process, so you have tonight before you the, you know, the request to hold a public hearing, consideration of resolutions that provide the results, declaring the results of an election, and so, you've got the substitute resolution 19-29 in front of you that contains the results of that election. And, and so, you'll see that there are 32 votes, all 32 votes in favor of the annexation. And so, that includes staff presentation, if you have any questions.
Right, are there any questions for staff? Son? All right, thank you. Then we're gonna open the public hearing on item 11. We don't have any requests to speak, but it is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on item 11? Seeing none, close the public hearing on item 11 for any further question or comment or for a motion?
I'll leave it to recommended action.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Ledesma and seconded by Mayor Potemor Roscoe. All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. Item 12 is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 15-53 Calling An Election To Amend The Special Tax Formula Within CFDS. Resolution 19-54 Declaring The Results Of The Special Election And First Reading Of Ordinance 19-8 Levying And Apportioning A Special Tax. Mr. Blumberg.
So, item 12 deals with the amendment to the special tax formula within an existing CFD, CFDS, which is Port Town Services. The council formed the district last December, but subsequently, staff and the developer met to talk about the maintenance services. but subsequently, staff and the developer met to talk about the maintenance services that would be assigned to the city and found that there would be an increase in the maintenance budget. So we determined along with the developer that we'd go back and we would increase the special tax formula through the amendment process. So it would increase the single-family home rate from $107 a year to 166. And then for... Typically, we also have an undeveloped land special tax. That would increase from $1,417 a year to 2,257 per acre. So to amend the special tax formula, you have to go through similar steps to the CFD formation process. So tonight, we're asking you to hold a public hearing and then consider the revised resolution in front of you, Resolution 19-54, which contains the results of the special election with all 13 votes in favor of increasing the special tax. So that concludes staff's presentation.
Are there questions for staff at this time? All right. Seeing none, we're going to open the public hearing then on item 12. We don't have any requests to speak, but does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing on item 12 and return it back to the council for any further question or discussion or for a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Right. It's been moved by Mayor Potemorosco and seconded by Councilmember Ledesma. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. Item 13 is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 19-64, establishing a community facilities District 29. Resolution 19-18, calling an election to submit to qualified electors the proposals of levying a special tax and establishing an appropriations limit for the district. Resolution 19-19, declaring the results of the special election and first reading of ordinance 19-4, levying and apportioning a special tax. Mr. Blumberg.
So this item deals with what will be our first new infrastructure financing district, CFD, the first one since 2010, when we approved the Bridge District, CFD 27. So we haven't done one of these in a while. And tonight, we're going to ask you to approve the formation of the Port Town Infrastructure Financing District. And once formed, we would come back later in the summer to ask the city council to authorize the issuance of a bond debt that would be supported by the special tax. And the city would be acquiring certain improvements with those bond proceeds. And the resolution of formation actually references the acquisition in shortfall agreement, which specifies those public facilities that would be... are potentially acquired using the bond proceeds. Of course, we never know until we issue the bonds how much we'll get. So prior to your consideration tonight of the resolution to formation, we would ask that you have a public hearing. And then there's the approval of the revised resolution declaring the results of the special election, which shows all 13 votes in favor of formation of the district. And that concludes staff's presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Blumberg. Are there questions for staff? All right. Seeing none, we're going to open the public hearing on item 13. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Return to the council. Further question, discussion, or motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by Mayor Potemorosco and seconded by Councilmember Ledesma. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. That brings us to item 14, which is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 19-47, amending the general plan land use diagram from recreation parks to low-density residential for APN 014760-033, and from low-density residential to neighborhood mixed use for APN 04610048. And the first reading of ordinance 19-7, amending the West Sacramento zoning map from recreation and parks to residential, single-family for APN 014760033, and from residential, single-family to neighborhood mixed use for APN 046010048. Mr. Tilly.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this item. I own a property that abuts to 2,300 Jefferson Boulevard. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Sandin. Mr. Tilly.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're here before you requesting your consideration of two minor general plan land use map and corresponding zoning map amendments for two properties here in West Sacramento. Both properties were looked at through the general plan when we constructed the general plan really at the neighborhood level back in 2016. And two parcels were inadvertently included within the incorrect zoning and general plan land use categories. The first one at 2,300 Jefferson Boulevard, which is a small triangular parcel down at Devon and Jefferson Boulevard, was mixed use previously. And given that's adjacent to Arlington Oaks, which is low-density residential neighborhood, we're asking that that actually be put back into mixed use the way it was previously. And similarly, the property at 590 Rivercrest Drive, which is at the very east end of Rivercrest Drive in the Rivers, adjacent to open space area, was included in parks, but it really was a property that was part of the subarea for single-family residential development in the Rivers Plan Development. So in sum, we are asking the council to consider amending the general plan land use diagram for these two parcels, and of course, the corresponding zoning map amendment to correct what were inadvertent errors where we did the general plan back in 2016. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Are there questions for Mr. Tilly at this time?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks. We did have one request to speak on the items, so we're going to open the public hearing on item 14. And the request is from Rosie and John Kane. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pleasure to be here in a nice, cool air-conditioned room. I think Mr. Tilly was very eloquent in terms of addressing this. My name's John and Rosie Kane, and we are the property owners of 2,300 Jefferson. Smiles from everyone. And this was an error that we've discovered and the city discovered, and we've worked well together. Part of what we would like... Rosie and I would like to say thank you. Thank you for your speedy attention and looking at this matter and returning the zoning back to its original zoning complex. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's our only request under the item, so we'll close the public hearing and return to the council. I would like to just say thank you, John and Rosie, for both for coming tonight. And it's an old adage that you cannot fight City Hall. You absolutely can't fight City Hall. When you're right, fight City Hall. And that's exactly what you did. And made sure that the error was confirmed and then fixed. And thank you for doing that. And I know how much you care about the community and how much you've contributed to the community. And this is... It was our error, and you insisted that we fix it. And we're doing that tonight. And appreciate all the cooperation and collaboration in order to make it happen.
We appreciate the team.
Thank you. Mayor Potemorosco?
I'd just like to make a motion to approve. Second.
All right. It's been moved by Mayor Potemorosco then, and seconded by Councilmember Guerrero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. All right. Can someone let Councilmember Sandin know that...
Let her pass in.
All right. So now we'll proceed to item 15, which is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 19-43, adopting the 2019 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Jacobson.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Since the notice for this hearing was published on May 22, staff has received additional information about programming from inside the city about evaluating additional scope of work for programming of the Community Development Block Grant Fund. So we're recommending that the hearing be rescheduled to an undetermined date in order to allow us to evaluate that.
Okay. Is there any objection then to continuing the hearing to a future... to a date uncertain?
Any motion?
No motion.
There's no objection. Okay. Then that'll be the order. Then item 16 is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 19-57, amending the city of Sacramento Book of Fees, West Sacramento Book of Fees for parking meter rates. Mr. Lee.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Larry Lee, and I'm the new parking manager from the city manager's office. For you tonight is a recommendation to add a delayed meter rate to the city's book of fees. This new rate will delay the charge of parking at the city's parking meters until the third hour. Beginning of the third hour, no more parking rates will resume. For background, the city commenced service of parking meters in the Bridge District on July 1 of 2017. The city's parking meters run on a tier-based structure where the hourly prices increase as you purchase more time. A special event meter rate also goes into effect when there is a special event at Rave Field. After close to two years of operating parking meters in the Bridge District, working with stakeholders and closely monitoring parking there, staff recommends adding this delayed meter rate to help further attract visitors, events, and foster development in the Bridge District. Because of meter parking in the Bridge District, some visitors have chosen not to visit or hold events there such as yoga on the pier or in cycling classes. With this area of our city still at an early stage of development, it is critical that our city have tools like this in its toolbox to attract visitors to our area and ensure success of their Bridge District. The delayed meter rate will be limited to Riverfront Street from the O2 Bridge Streets and the city's Fifth and Bridge Parking Lot. It is important to note that this delayed meter rate will only be temporary. While the delayed meter rate is in fact, periodic parking studies will be conducted to measure the daily average parking occupancy rate. Once the daily average parking occupancy rate at each of these locations meet or exceed 85%, it will revert back to the normal tier-based meter rate, and there will no longer be a delayed meter rate. An 85% rate is the industry standard for optimal parking occupancy, ensuring that one or two parking spaces on the block face remain open for visitors. This delayed meter rate is a parking industry best practice and is similar to what other cities and private organizations use to attract visitors. For example, the city of Sacramento on an annual basis stops its meters from charging for parking during the holiday shopping season so they can attract visitors to shop and dine in their downtown and midtown areas. This has been in place by the city of Sacramento since 1995. Other cities and private organizations also delay their parking garage rates, so customers are not charged for parking for an initial period of time. These types of offerings are very popular with businesses and visitors and are often promoted by business groups and the news media. This recommendation to add a delayed meter rate will help West Sacramento be an easier place to visit and help ensure the success of our Bridge District where it is still at an early and critical stage of development. With that, I would like to return this item back to the public hearing. Thank you.
All right. Are there questions for Mr. Lee at this time?
I'm sorry. Yeah, for me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. So if the threshold's 85%, what are we at today?
We haven't measured it, but it's pretty low. The measure would be Tuesday through Thursday and Saturday, Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay. Yeah. I know on the weekends, it's pretty tight there, but it's starting to fill up. But yeah, I think I always want to know what it is currently and what to expect. So, thank you.
All right. So we're going to open the public hearing on item 16. We don't have any requests to speak on it, but does anyone wish to address the council? Is it just a public hearing? All right. Then we'll close the public hearing. Welcome. Welcome to the hornets nest of parking in the urban area, Mr. Lee. So there's a lot of policies that play in parking, and we have made a lot of key decisions over the last... even over the last two years in parking in the Bridge District in particular as an example of an urban area that we are creating... that we're creating alongside residents and developers and shop owners and restaurateurs all along the way. And it's been bloody at points. And I think one of the critical things to recall is when we are... We have to have a... We don't want to change the policy every day. This is one of the critical lessons, I think, at least that I learned from the cycle that we went through maybe two years ago, which is like every other month, well, now there's six residents that want this, and now maybe the people who are coming to Drake's in a year from now want this, and what about that? And it was so much change that the uncertainty, the insecurity around it was causing way more problems than any one of those individual improvements might have been fixing. So for me, at least, one of the policy objectives here is to have stability, have predictability, and not have every time you go, it's a different parking regime. And to have triggers like this. So first of all, I want to say I appreciate having some of these standard metrics that are clear from the beginning, that you're not coming back to us at some point and asking us to make more decisions, most of which are bad, because at least many of your... many folks in the industry labor under the incorrect belief that you just have less and less parking over time, and the city can just start cutting it off, and people will then switch to transit or biking or whatever. And that may or may not be true in transportation planning. It's not true in community politics. I mean, once you give somebody a parking permit on the public street for free, for example, the cost of taking that back is enormous in terms of the credibility of the organization. And so we've tried very hard to not... The goal is not to fill up every parking space, and the goal is not to project advertising to the region that this is unlike Midtown Sacramento, please drive here, because that's not a sustainable long-term strategy for the neighborhood or for the commercial visitors. And in fact, when we were debating a lot of the residential parking requests that were coming from the neighborhood, and the council held back and said, no, we're not doing... we're not going to provide a lot of unlimited free... you know, free or even paid or permitted parking on the street because we need to reserve parking for visitors to the public park, visitors to the public riverfront and the River Walk, as well as folks who are going to patronize the barn in Drake's and whatever retail enterprises is in the Bridge Project that's across the street from there. We have to preserve that. And a lot of folks, including our experts in City Hall, are telling us that's a long way out, and that's not really a thing. And we're... It's been a thing since October. At peak periods, there's not enough parking, which is by design. But if we had agreed at that point, you know, just for... Since I'm in... I live in that area, so just to report back basically to the council, if we had agreed at that point to the kind of residential permit street parking that was being proposed at that point, we would be in a world of hurt, just because Drake's has been as successful as we had all wanted. But that at the moment of that point, people couldn't envision it, even though... because it just seems so far away. And there's so much development happening in that district that what it looks like right now is not a good indicator of what parking situation is going to be here from now. So as a policy principle, stability to me is important, and also not creating a situation where we are projecting withdrawing parking later, you know, in large amounts, where folks are making choices today to buy or to advertise parking that's not going to be there later. Because it is definitely... And just as we see in Midtown and every other commercial district in pretty much anywhere in the country, shop owners and restaurateurs always will be asking you for more parking. They will always be asking us for more parking. Residents will always be asking for more parking. So I do want to encourage you not to think of this as a stakeholder-driven process, where the fact that the con... that the stakeholders in the area all would like... each at one moment would like to have more parking, that we try to accommodate that. So that said, I think this is... Certainly, I'm curious what my colleagues think about it, but this basic approach I'm supportive of, the lot I want to... I just want to be sensitive about, because the lot was... We invested in the lot partly for this purpose, but also in order to make the transition possible for the residential units in the district, of which we're about to open up quite a few more as the next several phases of the development right around that area occur. So I don't want to end up in a situation where Drake's or others feel like that's their lot now, and then we have, you know, five more projects open up, and there's not enough parking for those folks on a transitional basis. So we have to manage that less on making sure we're filling up all the capacity and more on making sure that we're lined up with our strategy for mobility and transportation on a going-forward basis. So, Mr. Ledesma?
Yeah. And welcome. I should have began my question with that, because I asked the question about threshold early, because I support this, because it needs to have that trigger. The delay time period is super helpful to the community today in the times I've been down there. And hearing the folks that go to Drake's or are going to the Riverfront, they see that as a real plus to be able to have that first two hours there in delaying enforcement. But we do need to have a trigger, because as the mayor pointed out, it's one thing we've become very conscious of as we've planned for the Bridge District and even outside the Bridge District, and we're having urban area. So I agree with you on a lot of those fronts, our kind of policy choice and how we're going to approach parking, but very much support kind of this approach where we're going to kind of have a trigger. It's identifiable. So I kind of want to know where we are, because I think the reality is, we all know, and our intent was always to activate the Riverfront and have a place where you would have commercial spaces, we have in Drake's, and you'd have places where people live, which is now coming out of the ground with more coming, and where frankly, people can recreate. And I think that's been the lens that we didn't have when we started the parking wars, if you want to call them that, or battles, because I don't think jump bikes are really in its place yet. We maybe had the first iteration of that, and VIA certainly wasn't. We maybe had the first iteration of that, and VIA certainly wasn't, or VIA service wasn't in place yet. So, yeah, it, I think investing as we did in the trail and investing in those modes of mobility have lessened kind of any impact of parking that I've seen so far. We're still going to need it, and we, and as I like to tell people, the public has paid for the right to have those spaces available for people coming in and out, and we need to reserve them for that, and that's critically important to us. So, I appreciate the efforts here, and it's very visible and transparent down the line when it does get more busy, that we will no longer have that, that delay time period that we're back, we're, we're at a point where we're, we can manage it. So, thank you for your work on this, and I look forward to working with you more.
Thank you. And Mayor Protemorosco.
Oh, well, I remember when we had this, you just telegraphed it, we had this discussion months ago, and I really thought the lack of parking or the complaints about the lack of parking were really going to be the death nail, or maybe that was a little too strong, but I thought it would be a disincentive to participate in festivities or goings-on in the area, which I'm corrected, actually. I see the barn on a, on a Saturday or a Sunday, and you'll see that people, even despite the lack of available or plentiful parking, they're finding alternative modalities to travel there, and it's really encouraging, because, you know, as much as I was afraid of, of that happening, that the folks would just be dissuaded, they actually found a way. And, so, I mean, I agree with, you know, just having that, making that statement ahead of time and encouraging our community to come out in alternative ways. I am in agreement that, of the policy, especially as it applies to the streets, and I understand the mayor's comments about, you know, a lot, because once we allow a certain level of use, that becomes the expectation that you can't retract later, because it's assumed benefit. So, I'm interested in figuring out how we, how we navigate that, so that way it doesn't look like, oh, our right has been stripped from folks who, you know, on both sides, the residents there or also the people who are there for recreational purposes. But welcome aboard, and thank you for your presentation.
Good year. Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, and, and welcome to, I have a question about what it looks like when we hit the eighty-five percent threshold. So, so you've been parking for free for a year, and then as a citizen, what, what does it look like to me? How, how do I know that we've hit this, and what's my experience? So, I, I really want to understand what that looks like.
Yeah, so we would advertise the delayed meter rate with signs, and once we meet that eighty-five percent threshold, we would remove those signs and update the rates on the meters, and then we would put notifications on vehicles to let them know that, that the delayed meter rate is no longer in effect, and there would be a transition period for that.
Okay. So, it would be mostly, mostly through signage and then probably through our, our communications office and, and other ways. Does it, another question, because I was just trying to think of how this, how this works and, and some of the concerns that, that have been shared. How, when people park now for free, they just pull in, they're there for two hours, and then they can go. They don't have to check in?
Correct, and there's a sign on the machine that instructs drivers to do that.
Because I, I was actually thinking, if everyone checked in for their two hours, we would have better data about the turnover, and then people could go in and pay at the end of two hours. So, I don't, I, I know we're doing things in conjunction with Sacramento, so I, I don't know how it works there, but, I don't know, I just was, I was trying to think a lot about collecting data and understanding people's behavior, and I didn't know if we wanted to have people, if it was possible or wanted to have people check in, because the other thing, because I, I've, I've worked in Woodland for the last three and a half years in their two-hour zones, and so you, you go and park for two hours, and you go and move your car to another two hours, and then you go and move your car to another two hours. So, I always have these really cool breaks at every two hours to move my car, but I didn't know if, like, for, in this district, if you could go in front of Drake's and then to the parking lot, and then in front of Drake's, and then the parking lot, or is it all just considered one? Because I, I really am just trying to understand, like, how, I want this to work if we do this.
Councilmember Sandin, perhaps it would be helpful, Larry, if you could explain the, the connection between the book of fees and the Park Mobile app as it relates to that?
Of which part?
The, how the Park Mobile app will integrate the, the two-hour parking, yeah, if you could explain.
Yeah, so, when drivers park, the way that's currently working right now, the book of fees, we charge for the parking, but once this goes into effect, drivers will have to check in at the machine and the app.
Okay.
And the app will actually give them a notification that parking is free.
That's good.
And then, the hour one and hour two will show zero, zero for the charge, and then hour three, it'll charge that rate.
Okay, so that'll be something new that we'll have to educate people on as well, because I think right now you just pull in front of Drake's, you go hang out there for a couple hours, and you move on, if you're driving.
Correct.
Instead of biking or something else. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Guerrero.
I, I did utilize the app, and I realized everybody else that went did not, but that's because the, that's because our city manager told me that, that this existed out there. So, I looked for it and found it and had to learn how to use it. But I think notifying, you know, maybe partnering with Drake's to educate the consumers that we do have an app, and they do need to sign in to start the behavioral patterns might, might be an idea you can coordinate. I also want to see what we can do to coordinate a relationship with VIA. So, if there is a way to park further away, to start the behavioral patterns in the transitioning process now, to park farther away, and maybe say you'll, you know, you're going to park, you're going to pay, and since this is an app, partner the two apps, so maybe it's one fee, and that could be the incentive so people don't have the two fees, so to be, you know, a dollar fifty to try, you know, to have a ride out and back, and that way VIA is constantly present at that area, because currently VIA has to be called from wherever they're at in order to, to arrive, and they're probably in the vicinity anyways. But if they're not, it might take a little longer and be a disincentive if there's no connection, but if you've already prepaid, people will likely, you know, wait for that VIA return ride back to their parking structure. So, just taking into consideration some, some patterns to start moving people in a different direction now, that way we have some, some planning down the road in the future.
Yes, we can certainly look into that.
I mean, overall, for me, the, it's, it's important, this, this topic is so complicated and important that it is appropriate that it has a direct line to the city manager. It's not an economic development issue principally, though. It is a placemaking issue first and foremost. Economic development is essential, but it's secondary to what the, what the built environment, what the, you know, how people are getting around in that district. That, that is at least as important, if not the, the direct request by either me or my neighbors who live there or by restaurateurs or shop owners that are there in, in the moment, because they will always want more parking. And they've all acquired land based on a certain parking mix, so we're, we're not under any obligation to give them as, you know, give them the pub, the taxpayer-built public street parking for private projects. So, it is essential that it, that it function properly from a, from a walkability perspective, from a mobility perspective, and serve economic development in that context, but we're creating, we're creating a, the most, one of the most important new places in our city ever, and we have to get that right, and that is absolutely critical. So, please, please stay in with the planning department, too.
Please stay in.
And with the planning literature in this space, and what, you know, what we're learning elsewhere, not just around maximizing the use of spaces and the dollars that are generated from them, or, or, you know, keeping quiet, you know, angry residents or, or, or shop owners, but really also thinking, how does this actually function? Because part of, even now, you can see this at the, I mean, one of the reasons why the barn is successful is the journey to it is a part of the experience for many people. And so, just surrounding it with parking would affect what it actually is as an institution in the community as well. And the barn is, is, has the, right now, because of that, has the ability to plant a mindset in the Bridge District that extends far beyond its borders, to the way that people think about experiencing garden park or the, or the Riverwalk itself and the art and the dock, and the West Dock and everything else. And we shouldn't be overlooking that as we're, as we're managing the, the mobility and transportation around it. All right, so, we have before us the, the resolution, then?
Move to approve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just want to be clear that there is a replacement book of fees on your rat sheet that will go with the resolution.
Move to approve the replacement.
All right, so it's moved by Councilmember Guerrero, seconded by Councilmember Sandin, the modified version. I think no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, drink none. Motion carries. All right, item seventeen then is consideration of a policy document to guide measure N expenditures. Mr. Robinson, and then we also have our council subcommittee on this, which is Mayor Protemorosco and Councilmember Ledesma that have been working on this as well.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll make my presentation brief and turn it back over to the council fairly quickly. As you're aware, the City of West Sacramento has a long history of voters approving revenue measures to fund community benefiting projects around the city, and that unusual level of support from the community is a direct result of successive councils having earned the community's trust by self-regulating their use of voter-approved funds from the various measures and making sure that those revenues are utilized in a manner that's consistent with the voter's intent and the ballot language that, that went with the authorizing measure. Every measure that the city has enacted has its own framework that's designed to ensure accountability and transparency in the city's use of those revenues. Measure N was passed by the voters in November of two thousand eighteen, and it added a quarter cent sales tax for general purposes. The ballot language at the time referenced three uses for the funds: public safety, inclusive economic development, and community improvements. One of the key tasks that faced the council following the approval of Measure N was to develop a more detailed definition for those funding categories and a mechanism to create the transparency and accountability that the voters have come to expect when ballot measure funds are expended in the city. At its strategic planning session in February of two thousand nineteen, the council formed a subcommittee that the mayor referred to, consisting of Mayor Protemorosco and Councilmember Ledesma, who have worked with staff to develop the policy framework that's attached to your staff report tonight. I just want to go, rather than going through the nitty-gritty of the document, I have a table, I've got just the one slide that has a summary of the key points, and then I can refer to any questions that you might have. If the AV fails, I do have paper backups of this document. There we go. Okay, so, there are the three categories there. You've got public safety, inclusive economic development, and community improvements. I'll just go through each, each one and some of the key features that are proposed in the policy that's attached to your report. So, for public safety, the use of those funds is, as the name implies, intended to be for, primarily for police and fire, which could be either capital or O and M-type projects related directly to those departments. There is a provision in the policy also that would allow for other projects if they're directly public safety-related, so, you know, that could be, you know, I suppose, cameras or lights or some kind of physical improvement that wouldn't necessarily be administered directly by one of the departments, but would have a direct sort of causal linkage to their, to their work. In terms of the amount of money the subcommittee sent and staffs as well, was that, you know, public safety was one of the primary considerations in voters' minds when they voted on Measure N, so the, the recommendation in the document is that fifty percent of the funds from Measure N be allocated to the public safety component, and that those, those funds not be fungible with the other categories within Measure N, so that would be a fixed percentage that would go directly to those uses, and that those uses would not be targeted geographically, but they'd be available for use citywide. For inclusive economic development, that's, as we note in the staff report, that's a term that's used in various places in different ways, so one of the challenges was to put a little more detail to the definition of that, which we've done in the, in the policy. Basically, these, the way, the way the subcommittee and staff worked this through to define it is inclusive economic development would be excludable programs and projects that are designed to help folks that have been disadvantaged in the community, so, you know, socioeconomically and whatnot. So, examples of that would be a first-time homebuyer loan program, employment trading, facade loans in a, in a specific commercial corridor, maybe Sacramento Avenue or an area like that. These would be, you know, as, as distinguished from community improvements, which would be sort of non-excludable, non-rivalrous type projects, and I'll get to those later. The inclusive economic development, the thirty percent numbered there is intended to be kind of a flexible, more of a goal over a period of years, so there is intended to be some flexibility for the council between inclusive economic development and community improvement funds. So, ideally, over a period of years, there'd be a thirty, thirty-twenty distribution between those, but that could be flexible year to year to give the council the ability to put all of those, all of those non-public safety funds into one pot to do on a bigger project or to save them for a larger project in the future. So, each of those last two categories are recommended to be fungible with each, with each other at the council's discretion, and then for the inclusive economic development piece, we're recommending that there be targeting, geographic targeting, and we're suggesting the use of the Calen virus screen tool for that, because that includes both socioeconomic indicators and environmental exposure, so it's a little more, it's a little more detailed than just using income or a, a simple measure like that. And we're also recommending not just the exclusive use of a geographical targeting, but also to give the council the flexibility in the instance where there's a program that would serve a similar population but maybe be available citywide. So, for example, a first-time homebuyer program would be an example of that, where there's an income targeting, there's a, there's a means testing process to it, but you're not necessarily relying on the geographic targeting to get the, to get the program funds spent on the right people. It would be a different mechanism, so that, that flexibility is recommended in that category. And then last, community improvements would be essentially public goods, so projects that you don't, that are for everybody's benefit or not, they're not income-targeted, it's not designed to benefit a specific population, but rather the whole city, so streets, parks, street lighting. And this would be recommended for twenty percent, again, on a flexible basis, interchangeable at the council's discretion with inclusive economic development, and those, those funds would be available citywide as well. So, those are, those are kind of the high points. If you look in the policy, there's a number of additional provisions, many of those mirror what we have in Measure E. They're designed to kind of create some, kind of some consistency between those two processes, and also to increase the, the transparency and the accountability that's associated with the use of these funds, so we can talk about those individually if you want. Our sense is that, you know, working with the subcommittee, we've come up with what we think is a balanced approach that will provide a good, useful framework for the council in administering these funds, but still, excuse me, leave you with enough flexibility to be, to be nimble and to be responsive and opportunistic in the, in the use of the funds, so you can maximize their benefit for the community. So, we recommend your approval of the policy, and with that, I'll take any questions.
All right, let's turn to first the subcommittee, do any remarks you wanted to make?
Sure, thanks, thank you, John, for your work on this, and I'll commend John, as he turned this around relatively quickly since we met, like overnight, I want to say. He had a draft of it and heard our feedback and was able to turn it around to make sure we had a full council review of the work, so thank you, John, for all your work on this. And on behalf, you know, Council, Mayor Protemorosco and I had, we had a really good discussion and discussions around this in the past few weeks, as terms over that led us to this. But I, I think some of your comments, John, were kind of spot on, and what we've learned from the previous measures that we have passed in the city, and what we've learned from previous councils and their deliberate attempts to have discipline in how we spend those dollars, listen to what the voter's intent was, and have a process that we can, have a framework to, to understand what we're, really what it is, what we're trying to do affect what we're, what we intended, and that was the intent of all of this. I think part of, for me, you know, obviously being on the, also the Measure E subcommittee, we learned a lot of lessons, and that could actually work to where the behavior has changed, not that the behavior was bad before, we just didn't have any framework for staff to kind of bring us items that met specific policy goals and outcomes that we desired and whether they fit. We certainly passed along some of the same principles, as you probably read in the staff report, principles around, as you pointed out, around how we, we have the language in there, supplement, not supplant, as a key principle, how we have as a principle around that we should look to this with, as though it's the last dollar in sort of mentality, that this is, this is not enough dollars in either of these quarter cent taxes, E or N, to generate what we need, so we need to be very strategic with our investments, because on our own, we're not after anything in specific, we can't go out and purchase a, a new bridge without, but we can create a better experience on the bridge, for instance, with community investment of a few thousand dollars, that would be the last dollar in to make it nicer for, have a guardrail or something on that bridge. And I think that's the, at least that's the spirit of what I went into, how we framed this, and I'll speak for myself, but I think Mayor Protemorosco and I fully believe that this was intended, yes, the public safety piece was a critical part of what we wanted, and I think you noted it very well, how we wanted that, to make sure that was reserved, that the fifty percent, up to fifty percent, I think, fixed, that we want to make sure is there for that specific purpose, but on the inclusive economic development... But on the inclusive economic development and community improvements, we really wanted these dollars to be seen as accessible for all the times that the community has asked us about that sidewalk. It's a small portion of our sidewalk. It's not enough to get to with some of the big capital improvement programs we have, but can we find enough dollars to get that last piece fixed because it would really help make the neighborhood a little better and maybe spur some other economic development? That was the spirit, at least I think, that we tried to kind of keep that lens on, and you did as well. I mean, you really kind of heard us loud and clear on that, and this reflected it. We just had some really directional things around the edges, John, but you really kind of nailed it again. And, but I think, you know, one of the things that we, I think we all recognized, and at least I listened to, was around that community improvement and inclusive economic development, that we got, we're really good as a city at addressing, for a small city, some macro issues, whether it's developing the EIFD and being the first in the state to do that, how we are really adept at getting big grants, as we did for the Bridge District or for bridges or for whatever else that do get, we're really good at that. And what this, I think, can help address is how do we get that same sort of, the tools we need to go make some small improvements in neighborhoods that don't, that we just don't have access to or the funds to? And that was the spirit that I kind of wanted to lay over this, and I think it accomplishes that, and I'm looking forward to hearing the rest of the council's feedback.
Mayor Protem Roscoe.
I completely agree with Councilmember Ledesma's synopsis and analysis. Measure N was a response to what I believe to be a crisis, especially with our public safety community. Having lived and experienced personally, I had insight into some of the experiences experienced by our local law enforcement community and know how difficult it is for our West SAC Police Department to recruit and retain highly qualified, skilled, professional officers who are willing to take the charge of putting a gun on their belt and serving a community. So when I campaigned for Measure A, and, excuse me, Measure N, that was a big part of what I expected it to address. And I appreciate how the breakdown is with respect to, even though it was, there was a lot of attention paid to police, this is a broad public safety area where we include police and fire and other public safety-related projects. So before I go any further, I just want to say that, John Robinson, you are a quintessential example of talent that we have in West Sacramento. Our staff resources, everybody's so smart, and your quick turnaround and your, the framework you provided is fantastic. And thank you so much for taking our feedback and editing the document and providing it for us on such a quick timeline so we could get moving on this. This is what it is, it's a framework. It can't be too narrow to exclude certain things that, you know, so ideas, but at the same time, we want to be true to the language we put forth in front of the community to, and that was, inclusive economic development and community improvements. But that can mean a lot of different things in a lot of different contexts. So defining it for the city, addressing some of the needs that, even at council meetings when people come to that podium and say, "Look, the area around my house needs a facelift. What are you going to do about it? And we have no park impact fees to address that? Or we have no other resources that haven't already been dedicated? But now we have the opportunity to respond if that's, you know, what we choose to do?" Because, you know, there are certain people in our community that live in disadvantaged areas, or it might be some type of improvement that could benefit everyone. And so I like how you defined it for us. And I like also how we've decided to model this in such a way, just like Measure E, with the, you know, being very strict upon following that we're not going to supplant, but rather supplement, excuse me. The point I'm trying to make is that I want to use these funds to ensure that we can afford new projects, things that are really going to support the vision that we have for these funds. So not to just put money towards things that we're already doing, but also to encourage our community's awareness of where the money is being spent. So I noticed that that was in there under a transparency bullet, that we want signage, we want to tell people, "This is what your taxpayer dollars are paying for." So that way, you know, people feel the confidence in what it is that they're dedicating their money to. I feel like the approach is very balanced, and I think that it responds to a lot of the feedback we've been receiving, while also meeting the needs of what it is that the voters say that they want. Yeah, I think that manages my comments. Thank you.
All right. Are there questions for Mr. Robinson before we take public comment? Councilmember Gero?
Yes. Mr. Robinson, thank you so much for your work on this. And I'm looking at possibly amending the document, the policy document. I have some suggestions. I don't know if you want to talk about it now or after, but just some quick comments. It's been almost seven months since Measure N has passed, and I do see that the city can do a great job in achieving stakeholder input, such as VIA. You know, Sarah's done an excellent job in getting input from the public, reaching out to all corners of our community to learn about something and to get their involvement. And, you know, that's a model I'd like to see more of, especially as we look forward to Measure N on community input. And also, you know, this is a policy document, but also on the framework. I wish we would have had a little more of that, and that's where I've been at since the very beginning. The, you know, police officers and the firefighters put a lot of energy, sweat labor into the passage of this, and they contributed in so many ways in making sure that we passed, narrowly passed, unfortunately. You know, we wished it was a little more stronger than that. But a lot of it was around the public safety piece, where I'm looking at modifying the percentages to make a greater percentage for public safety and keeping it focused and dedicated, whatever's funded in there, to modify that and not transition it to be fungible with general fund as we are looking at that component in the language. So I just want you to have some thought about that as we move forward in the discussion here.
Okay. Any of those things would be the council's prerogative, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. So we have one request for public comment. Pat Flint?
This thing drives me crazy. Thank you, and thanks staff and both Karina and Crystal Desma for the hard work put into this. I noticed throughout the agenda this evening, there's more taxes being sanctioned for new developments and milrus and that sort of thing. And I just hope that there's a safety component in those taxes as well. I'm requesting that an oversight committee be established for Measure N because it is an important part of our community and it was an important part of Measure N during the election. Many other cities like Sacramento and Roseville have oversight committees for tax measures and sales tax increases. The language for public safety portion, I think, needs to be tightened up and be exclusive to fire and police, personnel, facilities, and the most up-to-date equipment we can afford to give our first responders. It should be used in addition to the general funds and not supplanted. General fund monies are already in place, and this is, like Ms. Roscoe said, something that's over and above. Police and fire have been long neglected by this city, and it's been something that's been a pet peeve of mine for years. They are our lifeline in so many ways. They are our first responders in any emergency. The public values and respects these men and women. The language needs to be very specific to the needs of these city employees and the public needs. Police and fire are the foundation of any community first and foremost. You've gotten away far too long without public oversight. Actions speak louder than words, and we are watching and listening. Even though there are not a lot of people here, I've spoken to a lot of people who are watching what's going on in this city. The city's grown by at least 30,000 residents, but infrastructure has not. First responders have not increased. Equipment is old and outdated. Facilities are hazardous to our personnel and need to be updated. Be responsible and do the right thing. Modernize our foundation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That's our only request has begun that, so we'll turn to the council. I also want to thank the Subcommittee, that this is a, Measure N was put on the ballot last year really in response to, you know, two critical moments that were happening in our city. One was the police recruitment and retention issues that Mayor Protem raised at the outset that had reached a crisis proportion and that there was no other alternative than to move forward with the ballot measure. And we did so very quickly in order to be able to meet the need and to begin the process of restoring our competitiveness in the region for the very best and the most diverse police officers that we could hire and to retain. And then secondarily, and what is often missed by the folks that are the most active in civic life, is there's a dramatic challenge of economic disinclusion in our city. And this is not unique to our city, it's true in many places, but nearly half of the people in West Sacramento report economic insecurity. They may have a job, but the job may not be steady wages, it may not be the hours, they may not have benefits, they may be one traffic ticket away from being evicted, they can't get a house in the neighborhood in which they've grown up, none of which necessarily have put them on the streets as homeless, but there are people. And the level of economic insecurity is higher than it has ever been in this city and elsewhere. So this was not sort of like a general notion that maybe, you know, we should do a little bit more for, you know, less invested, a little bit more in job training or whatever. It was, we have to, you know, as we are, you know, making dramatic improvements in the Washington District and building the Bridge District and getting ready for the Grand Gateway and the activation of West Capitol Avenue and all the great things that are happening in our community, that we've gotten this far because all boats have risen and that it's, that Measure N was a key component of which was to help to assure that that continues to be the case and that progress lifts everybody in the community and that nobody gets left behind by that progress. So I, and this is, it wasn't an also ran in the initiative, it was, I mean, the ballot measure, it was equally important and it is, even though it may not be on the minds of folks at banquets in the city or other events, it is on the minds of residents, particularly in the neighborhoods that have, that either have been challenged or are now experiencing a great renaissance, but that folks are worried about their, you know, about the effects of gentrification, which we largely have, you know, we're in better shape than many other places because we've had a higher homeownership rate than other, some of our peers, even for low-income residents. So as prices rise, their equity has risen, but that only lasts for so long. And so I just think it is very important, and as you look at the, you know, just for some cold water on this as well, even the votes on Measure N were not citywide in their broad support because of that economic insecurity, frankly, and also because of the nature of the campaign. I mean, where Measure N did not perform well was where this message around police and fire was the strongest. I mean, let's just be brutally honest about what happened in that election. It's a one-to-one correlation in those precincts. And so that's the tension that's remaining here right now, is whether or not we say more in public safety and less for inclusive economic development for those of our residents that are the most vulnerable and the most at risk or not. And to me, it's a false choice. There's enough revenue in this to do both things. We must do both things, and this framework goes a long way towards articulating how we can, how can we accomplish that and to make the kinds of strategic investments. It's a good amount of resources wisely spent, but it's not that much, really. I mean, community improvements, I was listening to the mayor of Protem, who I completely agree with, and, but, you know, you think about, you know, folks who've come and said, "Please, you know, fix my street, and we need sidewalks here, and we need a stop sign there." And Measure M would be enough to do, you know, maybe one of those things a year. So we're, it's not as though, we're not open for business for, and it's one of the reasons why we haven't asked staff to do a massive community engagement process because this is not, this is not a, you know, $30 million program. This is a very small amount of resources. And you think about the traffic calming pot of funds that we put together a decade ago, you know, because we had neighborhoods saying, "We need some speed bumps or a stop sign," or, you know, $150,000, I think, and maybe 200 at one point, and we were able to do like two projects in a year. Those are stop signs and speed humps. Forget, you know, whole new parks and schools and what have you. You know, these are extraordinarily limited resources. And so over-promising or over-engaging people and setting expectations that we cannot possibly accomplish when that's exactly what the economy is doing to so many of our residents is not serving their best interests. And so the framework like this is really important. Some of the details I did want to engage with, maybe the Subcommittee has some thoughts about it as well. I, the, I feel like the inclusive, there are two areas I wanted to address. One was inclusive economic development specifically, and to see if we could be slightly more tight in that area around the real issues that our residents are facing. So one is to be clear in the economic, inclusive economic development prioritization criteria, that we are talking about current vulnerable residents of the city, that that's what this is about, which may not seem like an important distinction, but with many of these kinds of programs and stuff, it can be. So current vulnerable residents, I think, would be useful. And the quality of life challenges, the marker for inclusive economic development, to me, is way too big, that, you know, a sidewalk improvement in a, you know, in a wealthier neighborhood or whatever, that's not addressing the massive inequality in our, you know, that exists in some parts of our community or this economic insecurity issues. It may make us feel better that we're addressing something, we may be improving, you know, the walkability of the neighborhood, but to me, that's not inclusive economic development. Inclusive economic development is around income and wealth and life chances and affordability and inequality. And that, I, to me, conflating that with a more general notion of quality of life challenges is, opens the door to way too much, and I think we do need some discipline in this process. The examples that are provided are mostly, to me, meet that test. So it's not so much the, what you had in mind in either the Subcommittee or Mr. Robinson's description of that, but I think quality of life, it just opens up, it opens up too much expectation about what this is as opposed to if it were to say, you know, an economic inclusion, economic security and inclusion challenge or, you know, something that was a little bit more focused on what the actual topic is that the voters were asked to invest in. And one of the examples that's not in here, although I know we had talked about it quite a bit, was affordable housing, or maybe it's here and I'm just not seeing it, but housing affordability is a critical one. And so, and that's the sort of project that could easily take the entire allocation for a year or two, and it's why having a list of 1,700 other things, which then everybody in the community is like, "Oh, this will pay for that." Well, I have a nonprofit that wants to do that, and we'd love to partner on that. And then it creates a long line of people that have expectations that we can't meet if we're actually going to deliver on what the core intention here was to make sure that we're providing, that we're combating gentrification and we're combating economic insecurity in our community. So to me, quality of life challenge was a bit too broad in that sense. The other, just the other lens on this is the way this would work because, especially with the community improvements being so broad as a category, unless we have a distinctive process for how we're going to take these up, I think it's very foreseeable that we'll just start to see every week random staff items that have, you know, this funding source, this funding source, and rounded out $70,000 from the community improvements portion of Measure N, that that will become the normal department director, staff proposal that will come to us. There will be no, and it won't be, you know, the folks coming to the council meeting saying, you know, "Can you, you know, my neighborhood needs a facelift" or whatever. It won't be that. It will be all the things that we've already told our staff are the top priorities, and they're out trying to make them work, and they're $50,000 away from doing it. And we will, by the, you know, we will just sort of discover what community improvements were at the end of the year by what we accidentally funded one project at a time. I don't know exactly what, how to get to that. Maybe we have a conversation at the, as part of the strategic plan that sets some priorities. I'm not sure what it is, but I feel like we need something other than, because that category is so broad and we have such a creative staff in interpreting broad criteria, that we will never see this again. As an actual, as an actual program, it will simply be a fill-in-the-gap piece for things that we care about. You know, the staff is only bringing us things that are, we've already identified as high priority, so it's not a knock on them. It will simply be a fill-in-the-gap piece for things that we care about. You know, the staff is only bringing us things that are, we've already identified as high priority, so it's not a knock on them, but it does mean that we would, it would lose any coherence or any connection to what you were describing earlier, which is we want to be able to deal with stuff that is maybe outside of that stream, things that aren't eligible for a grant from somewhere, aren't in a Melrose district, but that we would like to be able to, you know, fund or, you know, Brideway Play, we want to match their fundraising and so we're, you know, we pulled $20,000 out of that or something, you know, but I don't know what the answer is, but I'm just not sure that this, this stuff, additional flexibility plus the way that our staff is so adept at looking for funds to fill in their gaps that we will ever, we will ever really see this as a policy again if it's quite this flexible. Mr. Ledesma?
Yeah, I just want to respond to a couple of things you said and a couple of things in general. So, so is your, your, the last issue you just brought up, is your concern around the community improvements, that this is too broad as laid out in the table here or in the definition, that you're trying to, your intent is to kind of, how do we, how do we get a process that might actually, that isn't eligible for anything else? It's not on a capital improvement project. It's not on, it's something, providing more definition to how to guide staff in doing that. And I'm, my favorite example on this has been, a gentleman's been showing up, he hasn't in a while, for a while, talking about Sacramento Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
But there was a real issue that we were also talking about, the city manager and I, in Sacramento Avenue, which was a capital improvement project that, a property that was purchased on the, good grief, south side of Sacramento Avenue, wanted to make improvements, but the fact that, what's prohibiting that is the fact that the plumbing has to come from the other side of Sacramento and has to be plumbed and wired for the entire lot on the south side of Sacramento Avenue, which makes it prohibitively really expensive. So I don't know where, it's not like any capital improvement project, but it could be one of those small, it's not a small thing. I think it was, I forgot what the cost was, but anyway, that to me was sort of a leverageable catalyst that could, that could open up improvements on an area, not, as an example. That it's just not on any radar. It's not on any, Denix's list of things to fix. It's not on anything. And this, to me, I always kind of had that in mind as, how do you define that? Because it could really change the scope of our neighborhood by, we saw the improvements that other projects have had, kind of igniting activation and development on the side. So I agree with you. I just want to make sure we're kind of on the same page. And there's no way, I mean, you're going to get such a tight definition, I don't think that would, that would become so tight that no one's going to bring anything to us. I think there is, there is a level of engagement with the community by things we hear are prohibitive, that what we hear, that projects that are prohibitive, that community members may find prohibitive, that, you know, the things that we say we just don't have the money for. You know, we don't track that. We don't, right? We track the things we need to fund, what we can't afford, we just kind of keep them on our CIP until we can, right? And so how do we keep track of the things that just don't never make that list? And so again, that was just one of the things that, I see your point, but I just don't.
No, I mean, you need, if the implicit policy framework is we want to, at least with a portion of the community improvement fund, fund things that aren't our normal priorities, you have to have a process for, how you generate that, whether it's a set of stricter criteria or, or, you know, there, it's, we're going to, you know, we're going to, it's going to be available for matching and it's going to be neighborhood-based and we're going to do an engagement process for, we'll announce $100,000, which we will, you know, grant based on neighborhood workshops. I don't know, but you have to, you, you know, you can't, staff will not on the natural generate or filter projects that are not priorities for the purpose of coming to us. And so I feel like we need, we just, we're like, we're trying to pick scholarship applicants. We're always trying to pick the, you know, the most disadvantaged, the most likely to really need this thing, but then how do you find them, right? Now we're just looking for the folks with the lowest grades and the least amount of community engagement, the folks that wouldn't normally qualify. And the same thing, you run into the same problem here. So you're only then funding improvements that aren't, aren't high enough priorities for us to be spending time and money on. But why is that then?
Right.
So thinking about whether or not there's even segmenting this amount of money so that there are a set of, you know, a portion of it is available for, to, you know, to close the gaps and do those things, and what you've described as an economic development piece, right? So, but then maybe there's another way that gets to the issues that you, both you and the mayor Potem have raised around, you know, there's at least a feeling that there should be some way for a more organic community, you know, feedback and idea generation.
Yeah, and I think that, my point is it's probably already here. I mean, like, right, and I mean, and I point out that we heard from the gentleman a few times around Sacramento Avenue, so there's a need being articulated, just not associated with any project. Like, we don't, we didn't have anything, even a tool to bring out, like, how could we help, if there was an opportunity to help, what would that be? And so I think, I'm agreeing with you. I'm just trying to, I can't vision out what that process looks like in terms of something tangible that staff can, can have and is accessible and.
Well, I don't know if it's worth the trouble, the actual work, but there, I mean, there are, I mean, other places have, and I've never been a fan of them, but, you know, other places have done this, which has created these essentially, community, they call them community budget processes, where they do allocate, you know, $100,000 or $150,000 and say, you know, based on these criteria, and folks got to come together and there are going to be workshops and you got to find at least this must-match and whatever. But it's a defined amount of money, so it's, and it wouldn't be, you know, the full 20% because that's $600,000 or so, but a defined amount of money and you set the ground rules and then, you know, we're assessing to make sure that it's legal, it's consistent with our, you know, it's not inconsistent with what we're doing otherwise, but otherwise, you know, we leave it to that process to make those things, but with some real objectives that are around how to get, how to use that to spur other investments, to spur folks to organize. Kind of Brideway Play is an example, there, we've had other projects like that.
At a parks level, yeah, sure.
Yeah, Main Drain, Main Drain Parkway is another example, you know, where these kinds of funds could spur the, you know, the sustainability and the growth and the evolution of other, you know, community-based volunteer and film and property efforts, but with that as an objective as opposed to only people that have come to council, which seems like a pretty.
Yeah, and then don't peg me, it's just an example of there's plenty of ideas and people need, that's been articulated at some point, we just, no one's capturing that.
So I think having, you know, and I hear what you're saying about having a broad range of a description here, but maybe having a broad range delegated to like an oversight commission or a budget committee that can then hammer out some level of detail and have some, you know, year-by-year or bi-annual planning so that they can have some priorities set and then look at, you know, making some, you know, working with staff on what priorities could be set for specific projects and having the various partners, you know, people from those that are disenfranchised and, you know, struggling in the economic development sector and, you know, those that are all impacted here, which could be the police, fire, representatives from all the different sectors that are, that this is budgeted for, so that there is an inclusive process as we look forward to preparing the expenditure.
Yeah, that's a completely different framework than I was describing. So I'm talking about community, actual community-based, not interest group-based, but where you would, you know, you would open up to neighborhoods and to others that had a proposal and they're willing to do something on their own. I'm not a supporter of the, of the quote-unquote oversight committee. It's not, there is no such thing because the council is the, you know, under state law, all residual authority is at the council. So there's no, we cannot create a committee that is overseeing us in that way. And fiscal management in the city of Roseville and the city of Sacramento is, compared to the city of West Sacramento, is not, has not done any, they're not models for us in terms of more effective management, either of their voter-approved initiatives or of their overall finances more generally. So I don't, I'm not compelled by that, by that notion. And unlike the measure A or some of the other things in Sacramento that are project-based, right, where the ballot measure says it's going to fund this light rail project and this thing and this thing and this thing, where the voter, where the committee has the ability to say, okay, did you do the project that was in the thing or not and is it on budget and on time? That's not what this is. There's no, there is no, nothing to oversee for a committee when the ballot measure is essentially a one-sentence overarching objective. That's, that's the council's responsibility. And given the alignment that has to occur in that the departments all work directly through the city manager and the rest of the budget allocations do need to line up with the city's overall budget strategy and policy strategy, it really only makes sense for that to be occurring at the council. And as this framework is articulating, there's not a lot of, there isn't something for another group to do because what we're outlining here is essentially directions to the city manager about what to bring us as part of the annual budget allocations and as appropriations for specific, for specific projects. There's not a set of policies that are needed after the development of this framework. Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too wanted to thank Mayor Potem Orusco and Councilwoman Ledesma and Mr. Robinson for your work on this. I actually think, I know we're talking about perhaps making additions or some changes or modifications. I really like the elegance and the clarity that the document provides. I do think there may be some room to add something in the allocation section about, because it's really about the what is allocated and perhaps a little bit of direction on the how the allocation happens. I think that's what we're talking about. Do we want something that comes to us once or twice a year? Do, and how we get the input and the feedback? So I'm open to that addition, but I really appreciate the work to get us here because it really does align with what the measure said and then really digs in and talks about each piece and clarifies that, which I think it's needed for us to move forward.
I may, Mr. Mayor. I'm sitting here, thank you for your, and all your comments, and I think Mayor Potem Orusco and I will continue if we need to work with John to kind of revise this once again. But I want to go back to a couple of things. First, on the issue of how. And the more as I'm sitting here kind of marinated in the concept, I think there is an opportunity. And I think of comparatively what other of our colleagues in other cities are able to do that we're just not able to, right? In terms of district budgets that allow money to get to neighborhoods in those districts. And I think that's not a model for us in terms of, I don't like having any one council member having a direct, and being allocated towards any one thing, but the idea of looking at the how as a way for the community in, whether nonprofits, Rotary or BB Can or whoever has been trying to get something done, they have an avenue. And this council unfortunately ended because of, when I came to this council in 2010, we were in the middle of a worst recession in the nation's history and, but there was a grant program we had that gave grant money to nonprofits and whatever else. And fortunately, that was just not able to be sustained. And I'm not saying that this is a grant program, but it certainly, I think there's an opportunity in there if we think of the how and how we can get money and get people engaged and provide the projects for West Act Play or BB Can that are actually actively trying and investing, putting in equity of their own to that project. I think that's an interesting notion for me. I also want to go back to a little bit around some of the comments here around sort of the public safety part and the, and in general, the general fund, because I don't want to lose sight of the context that this was, and I thank Mayor Potem Orusco for bringing up the context that this was started. And, you know, we just had our budget presentation recently and, on an O and M budget, and our budget is in, thanks to the good work of our administrative officer and finance team, looks really good right now and is best it's been. But I don't want to lose the context that kind of got us to a point where we needed even measure N to deal with this. And the principle of supplement, not supplant, is an important one for at least me, because outside this, we've done a tremendous job and focused a lot of energy over the last, at least as long I've been at council, on economic development, growing our ability to grow revenues through improvements we made that improved everyone's tax base, their property tax base, improved, brought on things like La Mesa RV and the food hubs that generated more sales tax revenue than we've seen. All those things are positive things and we need to keep working at that. That's a large part allowed us to get in the budget position we are, where we're feeling, I think, pretty more, a lot more confident about our budget than we have, at least in the time I've been here. But I am not one to, at least personally, not one to kind of rest on those laurels because we have to manage the general fund in good times and in bad with the same amount of discipline. And because underneath all that, there's some really budget threats that are still at work. And so I say that in the context that where N fits in on all the areas, we talked about funding, which is public safety and, and the community investment and inclusive economic development, that this is meant to supplement, not supplant. We need to continue to try, in my mind, live within what we have garnered in the general fund. And I think I brought this up at the last budget discussion, the way we used in, at least on the last, with police, we had an issue and we had to deal with that and allow us the means to make sure we had the revenue to address that. And for me, how we manage the general fund in good times and in bad, we need to establish it now when it's good and have that discipline. So I still see that as we should, we should be, we should be looking at it in public safety from our sense of if it's something new, something that we're addressing, a recruitment or retention issue, that that's, N is sort of our safety net to be able to attain that. And we should, we should look at first the general fund and live with our means, try to grow that general fund so we have the means. But we're going to have to be managing multiple priorities there still because of the payments we have to CalPERS, OPED payments and whatever else threats, they're still there. So we need to, it's my firm belief that we need to be, I think you mentioned it, John in your report, that we need to look at the general fund first, see if we can manage our way through that going forward and in, as we did in the police situation, if it's something new and/or something that'll help us address a specific issue, it's there and we know it's there and we can take care of things. I know the comment was made around kind of what other is, and that's just the issue. I don't know what other is and I want to have something just in case some other public safety comes up, whether it's a fire issue, like a real fire damage or we got a, you know, presentation, vector control needs to have more funds to help with mosquito control. Those are kind of things that we need to have money available for. We just, we can't foresee what that is. And the idea of having a fund that we can say outside of what's in the general fund, it's not there, not budgeted, we need to be able to tap something. So I kind of, I open, I'm supportive of, very supportive of keeping that in there in addition to fire and police, which are obviously our front line of public safety. But we do need to keep it open because we just don't know what other kind of items are out there. And we saw, you know, the worst wildfires in our history happened just 90 miles away. And so those are kind of things that you never know what you might need those for, you know, for prevention, that the fire department says we may need. And I think we need to have, our fire chief needs to have, well, it's not in my general budget, we may need something, he has something to go to. Our police chief has a program, he may need fire, an extra patrol or something else that we need. It's there for that, too. So again, that's, those are my thoughts. I just wanted to bring that up.
I want to take an opportunity to just respond to a few things. In the draft measure and policy document, when I saw the terms quality of life challenge, of course, my first knee-jerk instinct was, oh, everybody wants a better quality of life and we could all argue for what that is relative to our personal experience. However, it was defined as, you know, any condition that negatively impacts residents' lives and that is experienced with greater frequency in a target area than in other areas of the city. And by way of example and not limitation, quality of life challenges can include environmental contamination, drug or alcohol addiction, low educational attainment, un or undertreated mental illness, food insecurity, eviction, risk of homelessness or lack of marketable job skills. And so that helped me reel in what it meant to me, to analyze what that meant. And perhaps we need to, you know, tighten up the documents so that way when we talk about community and. improvements, we're giving, it specifies that those are the types of projects, not just street signs or street lights. And I think that the signal was sent to staff who are at least here that don't, don't do that because we don't like it. But it's, the affordable housing, Mr. Mayor, it's in the, that was also discussed. That was a big thing. So it didn't make the overhead, but that was heavily discussed at this committee. Employment training, entrepreneurship programs, affordable housing, pre-eviction counseling, and people at risk of homelessness. For me, the lens that I looked at from Measure N was not just general things we can do to make things better in West SAC, but really targeting where there is the greatest need. And so if we miss that, I'm, again, Councilmember Ledesma said, we're ready to go back to the drawing board. But I think that with Mr. Robinson's skill and talent, he could probably use our comments to formulate something that really does speak very clearly about what priorities we want as far as targeting vulnerable West Sacramentoans. And finally, you know, it's already been said, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but there were four people on this council who were signatories on, for Measure N. And that was because there was not the idea at all that police should suffer with the burden of having the inability to recruit and retain qualified officers in our city. That was a real issue. And even though it was a very unpopular idea to go back to a city of 55,000 people and ask again for another quarter cent sales tax, I mean, you must be out of your mind if you're asking me for another one of those. But it is so important. That, you know, how dare you ask again. And so I just really want to restate that it was and still is a great priority for this council to respond to the needs of our community, both in public safety as well as in the general community at risk.
All right. I agree 100%. And, well, I'm not calling for a motion, but I'm a member of the council, too, so I'm going to say a word. And that is, that's exactly right. And I appreciate the Mayor Portem making that, that point. There was a lot of courage on the, on the council in the face of not much support from, from the partners that we were working with in order to get this ballot measure on the ballot and then passed because it was the right thing to do in a period of, you know, community warfare, frankly, around it. And the battle was fought hard in order to make this, make this happen because it was the correct thing to do. On both, on both scores, on both, on both the police issue, which we still have a lot of work to do as a, as a community, just on the question of police and fire compensation. So I feel like the conversation is the right one around, you know, what does public safety mean and what else could be spent on or whatever. I think the subcommittee's done a great job of articulating what that looks like. But we're a long way from deciding that, okay, no, we should instead, you know, we could fund some technology solution to law enforcement or something. We have a lot more to do on the, just the basic compensation side for police. So it feels like this is an important top, this is an important question, but it's largely academic in the near term because we still have investments to make in the recruitment and retention through compensation of a high-quality and diverse police department that continues to do a great job for our city. On inclusive economic development, it's, it is, to me, it's just too broad. It has a, it has an us feeling about it, like what can we do to make these places better? Or these neighborhoods, can we do, you know, well, they don't have as much art as they have in the Washington neighborhood. So, you know, let's do an art project there. And what, at least what I heard compellingly in neighborhoods throughout the city, especially in, that are, you know, that when folks describe West Sacramento as being broader than Southport and they've forgotten all the rest of it, all the rest of the neighborhoods, the invisible West Sacramento, which is, I cannot afford to live in my own community. My rent's just gone up by 25%. I cannot, I've been saving for a house for four years to buy a place to live in my own neighborhood and the prices are going up faster than I can possibly save. These are not, these are fundamental issues about whether or not people can stay as a part of their community. And that requires focus. And it's why, you know, when folks during the campaign asked about it, often it's affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing. Not that it's the only thing, but it's not like it's one of 17 things either on a list of possible things that, that might possibly make life better. Affordable housing, sort of, you know, transitional housing for the home. I mean, the things that are fundamental to being able to survive in the community, to keep, to keep our community together seem really important. And I just don't want to lose them and create an expectation that, you know, that next week 17 Yolo County nonprofits are going to come forward, oh, well, we do food insecurity, we do drug and alcohol, we'd love to partner with you and here's our proposal for a half a million dollars. And then we don't have any support. We don't have any resources left to do those fundamental affordable housing and economic inclusion and investment. So I completely, there's nothing about it I don't agree with. I just don't want to lose, I want to, I do want to make sure that we stay focused on, on that, to the extent that we can, on that fundamental proposition of people being able to stay in the community that they have built and that they've been in for generations that they love and that they want to be a part of. Councilmember Grue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did, now that, you know, thank you for the clarification that we don't need a motion at this point because we're still going to continue to discuss this and get this, bring this back. Just a couple of areas that I wanted to see where we can make some changes on the inclusive economic development piece. And when we're looking at pre-eviction counseling, but I have seen studies where providing additional support for rental, rental support. So financial rental support to prevent an eviction is a way to help folks to stay in their homes. It could be a month. It could be, you know, like you said, it could be that parking ticket or something like that that could cause them to lose their homes or their housing. So maybe including that as part of that component there. In the percentages, you know, Mr. Councilmember Ledesma, I did, you know, do understand it. And Councilmember Karina, thank you so much for the work you've put into this. Very helpful to see that. It's a good, strong template to move forward. But in the percentages, knowing that we have a significant public safety need, I was thinking of increasing the percentage to 70% for public safety and then 20% for the inclusive economic development and 10% for the community improvements. I think that helps to create a stronger public safety component because we have not been funding many needs now for a number of years, both, you know, salaries, but also we need a significant number, you know, of like, you know, police officers. We need a new police department. We have so many new things that we need here in the city because we have grown. So I'm feeling the demand that we have in our community. But I do feel strongly, you know, if we are considering shifting costs, that we do place in public safety, that it be done in collaboration with both the police and firefighters association. So that, this has been done in agreement, probably maybe with reluctance, I wouldn't want to have my salary hinged on a sales tax. But because that is the case today, that it be done in collaboration with them because that's, that's the risk they took and like to make sure that they remain partners with us. So to include language that if there's going to be a shift back to general fund, that it is done in collaboration with them in moving forward. And also under prioritizing criteria, you know, we also, under public safety, have a collaborative approach with the police and firefighters as we move forward on that. And, you know, again, on community input, you know, just making sure that we do reach out to the community in a way that is inclusive and expansive as we have in other models. I think the city can do a great job on that. And I, you know, would like to continue to challenge them to do that on Measure N.
All right. So I was saying earlier was I was not about to make a motion, but we are, we do have before us the staff recommendation. And I'm prepared to support, I mean, given the conversations, the direction we're given, I'm prepared to support the document as it is in its entirety and would ask as part of that, if we move forward with the, with the policy framework, that whether it's potentially a strategic plan item or some, for some of the process, that we, that we give some thought, both staff and the council and others, to ideas around the question of the community improvements piece on a going-forward basis. And like tonight, you know, coming up with a, you know, with a neighborhood-based process or some such thing like that on the fly is really, is really wise. But, you know, but we don't need to do that right away either. So I think that, you know, this framework and then thinking about how to continue to refine and to live into it makes a lot. Since I do want to clarify, there's, no one's salary is dependent on this measure, on the sales tax. The passage of Measure N was sufficient to trigger the permanent unconditional changes to salaries and wages. So nobody's taking any risks as a result of Measure N at this, at this stage. So just, so there's no, there's no confusion about the way that the, that the salaries have been funded. They are fully funded, part of the contract. They are not subject, if our sales tax revenue were to get cut in half next year, they would still be what they are, coming out of the contract. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification, particularly on the community improvements part. I think we understand where you're going. It's about the how we allocate so it doesn't become kind of a one-off every time. The strategic planning process is certainly a time to do that. But in the meantime, we also don't want to lose an opportunity to make good examples of projects or uses that would fit well within the existing policy. This, just to put some perspective on this, this measure is permanent and we, the money is flowing now. So I just want to get the clarification that if we have uses, potential uses for the community improvements funding in the first year, granted, we're going to come back to strategic plan and then develop a longer-term process. But part of developing a good policy is having, you know, good early representative projects for that. So I just want to be clear that we're not, we're not being asked to wait until that process is done before we bring something forward.
I haven't heard anybody suggest that we, that we suspend allocations. I mean, because any allocations are going to come to the council anyway during that, during that period. And we've already taken action on an item tonight that presupposes that we'll have those resources available for Memorial Park, if I remember correctly. So, so yeah, unless a member of the council wants to put a moratorium on it, I don't think that was necessarily part of the discussion. Mr. Ledesma?
Yeah, just on the community improvement part of it. Because I think it is, as you go forward on that and how we refine, I think maybe the document is just to make sure. Because there, we're all thinking in our minds, specific projects. But in my mind, if something is on to the point that was made earlier, if something is already on a capital improvement project, like this is not, the Measure N dollars are not meant to sort of supplant those. I want to be clear. If it's the, right, so I don't, I just want to be very clear on that, that to Mayor's point, is that we just don't want coming back and saying, oh, well, this project, we got this last, you know, $200,000 at a end. And it's the, it's just, just the spirit of it would be disheartening. So just think about how we do that. And I also want to point out that there's a lot of things that were brought up today about police stations. We're finding other, other funding for that, too. So you can't look at it in, as it's in a vacuum and a silo. There's, we have budgeted plans and projects that include many of these things. And so I, and that's both public safety and parks and everything else. And it may not be in the general fund. It may not be in the capital improvement project. We, and we may not be able to fund all of them, but we've already made those choices and those priorities very clear. So, and again, I think about those things in the context of, and it is, just because we can't fund it over in that fund doesn't mean, okay, well, let's go to Measure N and try it. No, that doesn't, that's kind of what I'm not against to, I'm not for. So I just want to be clear on that.
Okay. Mayor Portem Roscoe.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Sandin, were you about to say something?
I was going to move the recommended action, but I can wait. If there's other comments?
Well, yeah, given the discussion and the fact that our city manager's comment, I mean, this is a renewable resource that's coming every year. And this was made in response of meeting the public safety need with respect to police. We have met that need and will continue to do so in the future. At this juncture, I'd like to move the recommended action.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Is there further debate? All right. So the motion then is the, is the recommended action with the, you've got all the ancillary direction and thoughts and everything else that we'll continue to work forward as part of that. All right. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None that motion carries. Thank you. Again, Ms. Robinson, thank you. All right.
Thanks, John.
Brings us to the council calendar. Ms. Berlin, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Couple of items. The LAFCO meeting shown on June 27th, that's actually moving to July 25th. It's on the July calendar and that's going to be in the council chambers, not in Woodland. And then on Friday, June 28th, the PD will have its youth academy graduation and that'll be in the Galleria at noon.
Any questions on the calendar? City Manager report?
Nothing more tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney report. Staff direction for members of the council. And we have no future agenda item requests. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to adjourn in the memory of those who've lost their lives in the tragedy in Virginia Beach last Friday.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. Meeting is adjourned in their memory. Thank you.